Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, April 25th, 2023 at 5:30 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Paul Ruston from Redemption Hill Calvary Chapel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Quilts of Valor Judy Long, the group leader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening and welcome. In the fourth Psalm, the sixth verse, it says, "Lord, lift up the light of your countenance upon us, for you have made gladness in our hearts." Let's pray. Our Almighty God and King, we humbly approach your throne of grace and ask that you bless this body, bless this citizenry, and this body that is charged with oversight, this body of decision-makers. We pray specifically for the mayor, the council, the city manager, the city attorney, all department heads, especially police and fire, and all who serve under them, risking their lives to keep us safe each day. Give them knowledge and wisdom and guidance as they listen, as they debate, as they contemplate, and as they decide on the issues that mold and shape this city. Father, may they always remember that they are to serve and not to be served. They are to manage the city affairs with fairness and equity and genuine morality, and for the will of the people who have elected them, and that their decisions would be made based on what's right for the whole and not the few, that they would always consider the desires of the residents. Grant them peaceful productivity and watch over and protect their families and their friends, that they would never be subject to any threats of violence to themselves or their loved ones. Bless this meeting now, in Jesus' most holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And yes, Ms. Long, if you wanted to share a little bit about your organization with us?
I am Judy Long, and I am the Quilts of Valor group leader here for in Lake Havasu. It is a national organization, and what we do is we honor our vets with quilts. And so far, we've just been a group here for the last almost two years, and we've honored over thirty vets with quilts. And we just encourage you, if you know any vets, we have pamphlets out in the hallway that has my number and my card on it. So if you know a vet, please contact us, and we would love to be able to honor them.
Thank you very much. Thank you for providing that service for our community, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Council members Nancy Campbell?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Cameron Moses?
Here.
Jenny Koch?
Here.
Jim Dolan?
Here.
Vice Mayor David Lane?
Here.
Mayor Kalshighi?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is our correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 6.1 is to announce vacancies in the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies, both current and upcoming, on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, four regular pilot members, one regular non-pilot member, one alternate pilot member, and one alternate non-pilot member. Board of Adjustment, three regular members, two alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, two regular members. Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member, one alternate member. And the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall. They are also available on the city's website. And the deadline to submit applications is going to be 5:00 PM on Friday, May 26. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.2 is our city manager report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. First item on my report this evening is special recognition. On April 21st, Judge Donald Watts inducted Dr. Bobby Kimmelton, our Director of Human Resources, into the President's Honor Circle of Vet 6. Vet 6 is the agency responsible for representing twenty-six courts for Maricopa County Justice Courts. As the Mentor Coordinator for the Maricopa County Justice Courts Veterans Treatment Court, Bobby is only the second inductee to receive this honor. This award acknowledges her role in starting the courts and for her efforts to provide mentor support to veterans engaged with the court system. So congratulations to you, Bobby. Obviously also a member of the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame, and I'm not quite sure what she can't do. So congratulations again, Bobby. Thank you. She looks embarrassed back there. Vice Mayor David Lane, you presented a proclamation to Mrs. Lisa Morgan for earning the 2023 Teacher of the Year Award at Oral Grande Elementary School and the 2023 District Teacher of the Year Award. Lisa is a kindergarten teacher at Oral Grande Elementary School. She piloted the first-ever classical kindergarten in Lake Havasu City and now leads the Classical Academy's expansion of their curriculum with the integration of Latin for all students through sixth grade. Other teachers were celebrated for earning Teacher of the Year for the respective schools as well. Congratulations to Julia Dickinson at Havasu High, Rita Kidder at Jamaica, Stephanie Caterina at Nautilus, Tiffany McClintock at Smoke Tree, Karen Rockwell at Starline, Kim Lehman at Thunderbolt, and Eugenia Anderson at Lake Havasu High School. Congratulations to everybody, and thank you for what you're doing for our youth. This photo is courtesy of River Scene, so thank you for that. The Parks and Recreation Department would like to thank the Sportsman Club, the Lake Havasu Sportsman Club, for their donation of a post pounder that'll be used to install signage and cabling all throughout Sarah Park, including some trail signs that are about to go up in that area. And I got some project updates. This is an update on the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant Flow Equalization Replacement Project. Only a few months ago, we were in the initial excavation and construction of the new basin. As you see, the picture on the left shows the finished excavation of our basin pit, and the picture on the right shows the beginning phases of floor construction. This is a very big project. In the months of February and March, the contractor ran into some very tedious work having to excavate an area on the southwest side of the basin to install a 20-inch ductile iron piping that had a lot of unknown but important piping, something that we ran into as we removed the dirt to kind of see what's happening there. The picture on the left shows a side view on excavated line for the line, and the picture on the right shows a view looking down into that trench. A major milestone was hit in the middle of this month, just about a week ago. All underground work was completed, and the new basin has received its interior coating. The subcontractor is now on site constructing the aluminum roofing, and that is going to be placed today. So lots of milestones in this project. Now, an update on the water main replacement project on Lake Havasu Avenue. The project work is about ninety-nine percent complete, with the last remaining sewer manholes being raised today, and striping will occur within the next week or so, or within the next week. The picture on the left shows the finished subgrade, and the picture on the right shows the crews that were paving Lake Havasu Avenue, just within the last ten days or so. Remember that picture? Because this area had experienced main breaks in the past, the design project to replace the water main was nearly completed when the main broke on April 27th of 2022, almost one year ago. The design plans were quickly completed, and the bidding process was expedited, resulting in council warning a construction contract just a short time later on June 14th. The project consisted of replacing the water main on Lake Havasu Avenue from Acoma to Kiowa Avenue and providing new water services to each of the businesses. So each business has a brand-new lateral from the water main along this area. Unfortunately, we all recall that due to supply chain issues, the contractor experienced material delays. The project was delayed for about six months. It was very difficult to administer this project and to main traffic and access throughout the area. The businesses sacrificed while this project was going on, so we're grateful for their patience. However, this project is now almost completed. Pavement is down, and I think we can all agree that it's well worth the effort. The utility rate study project team, as the city, we're going to be hosting two public open-house-style Q&amp;A presentations. So on Monday, May 1st, right here in the council chambers, the city will be soliciting feedback from the public on the future of our water and wastewater rates. So again, that's on Monday, May 1st. The first session will be at 3:30, and the second session will be at 5:30. Both sessions will provide the exact same information. So pick and choose based on your schedule what's the best one to attend. And if you'd like more information about the utility rates, about this venue, or how to attend the meeting virtually, please contact us at 854-4278. And lastly, our city airport is preparing for the upcoming runway closure to all general aviation operations. That'll start on at 12:01 AM officially on May 1st, and that schedule is penciled for June 11th. Crews are working diligently, positioning materials and equipment to begin work immediately following the closure. The airport, of course, we received a little over $5.8 million in grants from the Federal Aviation Administration and the Arizona Department of Transportation to rehab our runway and cover expenses necessary to maintain the airport's infrastructure. We just did the taxiway just last year as well, too, so this is a lot happening at the airport. Our runway hasn't seen any improvements since 2013, other than surface improvements. In the end, the runway will be completely milled up, down to the base material, and replaced with all-new finished product. Additionally, all-new pavement markings are to be applied, including freshening up the chevrons on each end of the runway and looking at our lighting systems as well, too. For the public has questions or the airport users have questions, we're trying to get the word out, and Paul and Cindy at the airport are doing a fantastic job with that. But if you have questions, like to contact us, 764-3330, or we have lots of information also on the Lake Havasu City website. With that, Mayor, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, move on to item seven, which is our public hearings. It's going to be all about the airport for our two public hearings we have as well. So our item 7.1 is award bid to the American Road Maintenance for fiscal year 2022-23 for the Airport Seal Coat Program. Mr. Young?
Good evening, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we're here to ask for your approval tonight for the American Road Maintenance Fog Seal Program. We will be doing it for about 25,800 square yards, right in around our hangars and taxiway Bravo. We figured the best time, since you're going to shut down the runway and redo it, let's get in there and get the work done while everything is slow and be least disruptive as possible. And this has already been budgeted for the 2022-23 year. It goes for $80,000. It is an emulsified fog seal, excuse me, with polymers, so it's an upgraded fog seal that is specifically made for the airports, taxiways, and runways, and it is needed around the hangar, so it'll be a good project. And that's all I got for you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Young. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Young? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? If so, just make your way to the podium. All right, seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to award the bid for the fiscal year 2022-23 Airport Hangar Seal Coat Program to American Road Maintenance in the amount of $80,000.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is a discussion on a general overview of hangars at the airport. Mr. Frosley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, in the unlikely event that you don't know the gentleman to my right, I'd like to introduce you to him. His name is Paul Blazer. He's been employed by the city for sixteen years. The last eight of those years, he was employed by the airport as operation supervisor. He currently serves as our interim airport manager. So he's got a handful of slides for you to give you the general overview of how we operate with hangars and what our hangar situation is out there at the airport. I think you'll find, like I did, that there is a pretty significant demand for airport hangars. One of the last slides in his presentation discusses what we're currently doing to meet that demand. We do have a request for proposals on the street right now. That RFP doesn't open till tomorrow, so we're not going to have a lot of information to provide you with tonight, other than what's on the slides itself. But because it's opening tomorrow, and we have a good crowd, I would like to remind everybody that while these requests for proposal openings, the RFP openings are open to the public, they are highly anticlimactic. Nothing really happens there. If we're lucky enough to get a proposer or two, we read the name on the envelope, we open it, we double-check to make sure the required documents are in there, and then we move on. So there's no discussion or any fanfare tomorrow. The process from there is the proposal information is disseminated to the selection committee. The selection committee does their evaluation. Ultimately, hopefully, ultimately, a proposer is selected, and then we go into contract negotiations. So you're welcome to show up tomorrow, but nothing's going to happen. It's really rather boring. So having said that, I would love to get out of the way, turn it back over to Paul for his presentation. Of course, Shannon is here for moral and technical support, and at the end, we'll try to answer any questions you might have. So thank you, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Frosley. All right, Mr. Blazer?
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Appreciate it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. I've been asked to do a little dissertation about our airport and our hangar situation, and I'm going to keep it real simple. This is hangar 101, for those that aren't in the know, and a little bit about the airport and how people come in and park their aircraft and the basics. So let's go ahead and move on. So when you get to the airport, what do you do? Well, there's three different ways that you can park an aircraft. The most common is going to be your picture up there on the left, which is a tie-down. Most transient people, that's how they come and they go. They come in and they tie down onto the ramp, get their fuel, get their lunch, and leave. We also have some reserved ones that people lease month-to-month and tie down out there. Next over, you see a shade port. That would be the upgrade. That would be your next level of a tie-down. It gives you added protection from the elements that we have out here, and they're highly sought after, as well as the final picture, which is our hangars. The hangar itself is probably the most sought-after at any airport, anywhere you go. So let's move on. So what is a hangar? And as simple as terms, a hangar is a garage designed specifically for an aircraft. They're sought-after, like I said, at all airports, mostly due to protection of the huge expense that people have in their aircraft, protection from the elements, paint jobs, acrylics, all that are out here. With this sun, it's really hard on them. They can be built of numerous materials. Most commonly, they're built out of steel. So what types of hangars are available at the airport? And what do we have out there? Let's talk a little bit about that. When the airport opened at its current location, July 1st of 1991, some of the old T-hangers, which you see the picture up there on the left, came up from the old airport on the island. We still have many of those. They're all privately owned, and they're not as common anymore. Most people prefer the next one over, your box hangar. Gives you a little bit more room for your storage. You're having a little bit of furniture in there, and people like to get together and hang out at the airport and talk planes. Then, of course, we get over into the executive hangar. Executive hangars typically have more amenities. They're going to have a bathroom, they're going to have air conditioning, they're going to be a little nicer. They can get fairly large to accommodate very large aircraft. And again, they're probably, with what's coming, the most popular size that everybody's looking for. The city owns, the center picture, twenty-six of the box-type hangars that we lease out on a month-to-month basis, and there's forty-one privately-owned hangars and fifty-two FB-owned hangars. So the current rental rates, let's go ahead and move on. City-owned and privately-owned hangars, the city collects a rental of $477 to $718 a month, and that's dependent on the square footage, the size of the hangar. Let's go ahead and move on. The privately-owned hangars are the on-ground leases, so they're basically renting the ground that they put their hangars on. The current rental or lease rate is thirteen cents a square foot, and the typical range is from 1,200 to 1,600 square foot for the hangars that we have. So what if you wanted to go out there and you wanted to build a hangar? Like any, construction cost varies on the size and the materials that you use. Most aircraft owners made a sizable investment or in search of a hangar over any other means of parking an aircraft. The dollar amount of the hangar, whether it's purchased or rented, is an accepted and preferred part of aircraft ownership. So we're seeing out there privately-owned box hangars that are been there for some time, that are on the, if you would, used market, going in that $150,000 range. If you were to probably go out and build a brand-new one, you're anywhere in that range, $150,000 to $250,000. Executive hangars, again, are dependent upon the size, the door type, whether it be an electrical bifold door, and the additional amenities that can get up into the $500 to $750,000 range or more. Relative construction costs are approximately $75 to $80 a square foot, again, depending upon cost of materials at any given time. So that's where we're at with that. So why are hangars needed? The demand for the hangars at Lake Havasu has really grown. We're seeing the development of, like the Riviera and other areas, and the clientele that have those homes out there are typically our own aircraft, and we're getting a huge influx of inquiries. Our waitlist is currently a hundred and four prospective hangars, people that want a hangar. Even half of that, greater than half of that, would take a shade port if they could get one. We don't have any of those either. So per our airport master plan, the airport currently is home to 172-based aircraft. Many of them are out on the ramp, tied down. Everything from the small 172 is up to a Gulfstream 650 transatlantic jet that is a very large hangar, and of course, everything in between. So we currently have approximately, I just wrote this down, 376,000 square feet of hangar space. We had a forecast, the master plan forecast, that says over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, we're going to need an additional 160,000 square feet of hangar space. So we're way behind the ball. So what are we doing to do to meet that? Greg just spoke. We have an RFP out right now, and we're looking for a aeronautical land lease development out at the airport. And show the area. That we're currently looking at, it's on the southwest side of the runway. It's approximately, I believe we discussed, approximately 50 acres of land that we're looking to develop. And we have the area to grow, we have the area to build out hangars and to support the demand. We're in a place where the supply doesn't cover the demand, and there's much interest near and far for the prospects of new hangars, as seen by the people here tonight. So let's see what tomorrow brings when we open that RFP. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Blazer. So this item is before us this evening based on our planning session in February, where each of the council members were able to bring forward an item, and one of the items was hangar and the lack of hangars in some of the conversations that we hear from the public. And so that's why we have kind of this general 101 overview of hangars. That was Councilmember Dolan's item requested, and Councilmember Dolan is also our airport liaison to the council. So I'll turn it over to you for any opening comments, Councilmember Dolan, on this item, and then open up for questions from the rest of the council.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so at the retreat, we each got to come up with something we wanted to put before council, and being on the airport advisory board and a pilot myself, we've had many, many discussions at the advisory board level and at the talks with the airport manager. There's definitely a need. As we can see, they have a waiting list of 100 now. I mean, if you had 50 open tomorrow, how many of those 100 are ready to go and put a plane in there? But there definitely is a need, and I think we'll hear from some people tonight. At some of these meetings, you know, as representative from the council, a lot of people ask, well, what's the council's plan to do that? And like, well, the council doesn't have a specific plan. We've never actually discussed this item, so I thought it'd be good to bring it to council, kind of get some basic information. I guess it's also exciting that we have the RFP coming in tomorrow. I know there's a few people I think that are putting that in. I've heard some information about that. It looks promising. But like I said, I just wanted to introduce this to council, let, you know, give us all some information, to ask, a chance to ask some questions. The airport is a little bit overlooked sometimes, but is a huge, huge part of our city, brings in a lot of revenue and a lot of different revenue streams. So yeah, just wanted to open up the discussion and talk about the airport.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Dolan. And prior to Councilmember Dolan, I was the airport liaison before I was elected mayor, so I have some experience with the board as well. And as Councilmember Dolan mentioned, the airport is a huge economic driver. So a lot of times, we hear people talk about just aviation enthusiasts or folks with airplanes, just not the case. So if you get any packages from Amazon, or you get mail, or you go to a doctor's office in which they fly in there, the doctors or their staff each day, or you need to be medevaced out, or organ donors, lots and lots of things, other than just general aviation uses. But we do have a lack of inventory for hangars, and I think it's important that we make a commitment to having development there. We just got done with an airport master plan about 24 months ago that planned out the master plan of the airport. It is in line, as Mr. Blazer in his presentation mentioned, for additional airport or hangar development and other development avenues at the airport. And one of the greatest things about the airport, from my perspective, is that the airport is nearly funded by grants. The majority of everything out at the airport is funded by grants, and yet the economic return that we receive as a community far outweighs any investment that we make in there, and that includes all of the uses of the airport, not just one particular pathway. And so it'll be interesting to see how the RFPs work when they're opened and how the selection committee comes through. I do have a few questions. The waitlist, what does it entail to be on a waitlist? So you mentioned there's 105 people. How do we know that?
Well, we keep an accurate track. People come in, make inquiries as to hangar availability. We tell them at the present time there isn't any, although we do have a waitlist. How do I get on the waitlist? And next thing you know, we've got another name. So the waitlist continues to grow. I would want to say probably five years ago, that waitlist was a third of what it is now. It's gone almost exponentially as far as interest, and there's a lot of interest in the development side of it, too.
Is there any commitment to the waitlist, other than just adding your name to the list? Do they have to pay a deposit or any of those types of things?
Not at the present time. We're working through some of the details on that to actually confirm, have more confirmed lists. We do annually go through and call every person on the list to reconfirm that they still want to remain on the list, and we've had a few of them that have vacated, and for the ones that vacate, we get two more.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. The use for hangars, there's a good variety of the ones that you went over. What are the ones on the waiting list looking for the most? Would you be able to?
Most people are looking for their own personal hangar. Some people would consider, you know, space with others if there was something available, if we were to go to more corporate-sized or larger-sized hangar. But city, typically, what we have are the 26-box-type hangars, and people enjoy having their own space.
Okay. When folks get on the waitlist, do they have any indication? Just basic, very quick math, based on some of the information that you provided this evening, the rents in which we charge would not be able to provide a return on an investment for someone to build hangars. So is there an expectation, if hangars were to be built, that the rates would be different than what we're currently charging?
It depends on how you move forward with that. I think the RFP will, you know, show us a little bit more of the direction of where we're going to go as we move on, whether the city decides to build them ourselves and, you know, go on a longer-term return on investment, or if you do a, you know, public-private entity and go that way. I really can't speak to that. I don't know, Justice's got some comments on that, maybe?
Mr. Knutson?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we took a look at the math and what that looks like, and our ability for the city and to administer the activities at the airport, we are restricted to a certain extent by the FAA and what those we are restricted to a certain extent by the FAA and what those leases and what those rates, uh, you know, look like. Uh, so they're, they're, um, it's based on assessment and, and, and otherwise, if you do a comparison of other similar sized airports, we're on the, the top end of those, uh, those lease rates. Uh, and then you start looking at the square footage and, uh, what it, uh, what it takes to construct a, a hangar. A couple of years ago, prior to COVID, it was about $150,000 to, uh, to build a, a small hangar. Uh, the cost escalated quickly and, but now we're seeing some of those costs, uh, decline to a certain extent. Um, but we're, it's, it's well beyond the 10 year timeframe that we normally look at in terms of return on investment for those, for that investment, uh, by the city to, uh, uh, to pay for itself.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for members of the council for, yeah, Ms. Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you, you asked a couple of questions about the validity of that list and just how sure that 104 actually want to buy. Uh, actually would be, you know, interested once we got there. Um, my next question would just be, do we know with certainty that all hangars are being used for aircraft? And not just nice cars or cool place to hang out?
Yeah, we implemented a couple of years back, uh, a hangar inspection, uh, that we do annually now. And part of the parameters of the inspection is that, that hangar has to be used for aeronautical use. Um, there are hangars that are big enough that, uh, people can put tedskis or their abode or something in there. But the, the regulations basically state that you have to be able to get your aircraft in and out without having to move anything. And it's used mostly for aeronautical use. Uh, we're not, there, there's cheaper places to store your furniture and everything else, uh, outside of the airport. The, anything within the airfield should be utilized for aeronautical use.
Yeah. Okay. Um, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
On that same note, what are the, what are the rules out there? Like of stopping somebody go out there and like spend the weekend there or something like, is there rules of people staying in there? Like these executives that have air conditioning and stuff, I mean, can they stay inside their hangar? Can they?
Good question. Now, that is, uh, that is one of the things on the list of the hangar inspection. Um, and it does clearly state that it cannot be used, it's actually in the lease agreement, that, uh, the hangars cannot be used to live in. Um, no one can stay overnight. Um, yeah, it's, it's very clear in the lease agreement.
Councilmember Campbell?
Why was the RFP such a short time? It seemed like it was only three weeks and I'm looking at 50 acres here of master development. And as a planner, I would be overwhelmed if somebody said, hey, we're going to put an RFP out. You need to get everything, all your boxes checked in three weeks. Um, and I might be a potential developer that'd be interested, but I might just throw it in the trash because I, it seemed like it was too much of a burden to bring that to the table, if you can answer that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Knutson?
Councilmember Campbell, um, if I can field that question. This was the, uh, the identical, uh, RFP, exact same language. The only difference between the, uh, uh, this RFP and the one that we put out, what about six, eight months ago? Uh, something around that, that timeframe, around that exact date, uh, was, was the dates. So this is something that the city would issue the exact same RFP several months, uh, several months ago. And we got zero proposals on that. Um, at that time, we didn't really expect, or I have, uh, um, or at least have, uh, uh, great feelings about, uh, expectation to receive several proposals and, um, you know, the cost of hangar development, construction was, was pretty high at the time. Um, but we had several people kind of knock on our door and expressed interest in, in, in constructing hangars at the airport. So we put the, we put the RFP out there and, uh, got no bites. And then in the meantime, conversations have occurred with our airport manager about if anybody has an interest in terms of us, uh, uh, looking at this from a, you know, uh, from, uh, you know, another perspective or going out for, uh, more proposals, uh, those conversations have continued and, uh, got a couple nibbles in terms of interest that were out there and from, uh, a couple of different, uh, um, uh, parties. And so then at that point, we put the RFP back on the street, again, with the exact same language that was, uh, that was out there. So, um, if you look at the initial RFP that's out there, it's, uh, um, there's been notice provided to anybody interested in developing hangars for, uh, for several, several months.
All right. Are there any other questions from members of the council before we open the public hearing? Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. Um, on the RFP, did it, uh, have a specific number of hangars that we wanted to be built? Or was it just a generic? Bring us, bring us forward something.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Lane, uh, we set the RFP up to receive proposals from the, from, from private entities, um, based on what they could provide to the airport. So it's, it's, we had, we're not macro managing this, uh, this approach other than to say this is what, uh, this is what the airport plan, master plan, uh, calls for. Uh, here's some of the needs that we have at the, at the airport. So bring us your ideas, bring us your investment and how can we, uh, best, uh, uh, create an environment out there with improvements that would, uh, serve the users of the airport? And then we'll see what the proposals look like.
Thank you. And I think this is very important. Uh, as you said, Mayor, this is a very vital economic driver for our city. Uh, everybody uses the airport whether they realize it or not. I've actually been approached by, uh, other aviation type businesses, um, that want us to do some development out there. Things are very expensive, um, in the state to our west, uh, where there's a large aviation community. And there are aviation businesses, these aircraft have to be inspected. There's other businesses that are associated with the aviation industry other than just owning an airplane. And some of these businesses would like to move to Lake Havasu. It's one of those, if you build it, they will come type of scenarios. We just have to make sure we have the proper return on investment, uh, as we've already discussed. So the building of the hangars, I don't know if that's, excuse me, a city function or whether that's better in the private industry. I think that's one of the things we'll look at when we get these RFPs open. We have to have a return on investment for the entire community, not just for the aviation community. But it is something that if we do build these, it will have more of an impact other than just hangars for aircraft. It'll also bring other businesses to our airport, uh, which is vital to our economic development here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
So the other thing too is, you know, as far as needs, we've talked about at the meetings and, and in the RFP is, you know, of course we have like the list of 104. You know, uh, there's definitely a good group of those people that yes, I want a city hangar for $477. I think if we came with a new T hangar that maybe costs $600 to $700, that list would probably come down. Um, unfortunately, that's realistically what they are nowadays. Um, so, you know, what we were looking for, I believe with the RFP was in, in some of the big discussions we've had is, um, um, you know, we're looking for some sort of, you know, I think we'd all, people would like the bigger hangars, but the T hangars are definitely the most utilized space and the, the cheapest square footage we can get. Um, some of the other issues were some of the larger hangars. We have some, a lot of people in town that have, um, you know, some of the higher, some of the nicer jets coming in and back and forth. And, um, a lot of industry coming in here that we're kind of unaware of, but they're, they're, they're looking for space as well. Um, I believe we're also looking for, like I said, just you could have a, um, there's not a mechanic for general aviation at the moment. They closed down a few years ago. Even if we could get somebody in, where can we put them? We, we need space for that. Um, now the other, the other thing we were looking for was a wash bay, um, for wash the planes. And of course, anybody that's going to develop this land, it's going to cost the infrastructure to get everything in. Um, and of course, also the plan to, you know, get enough infrastructure in that we can hopefully develop that whole area up there. So that's kind of hopefully what I'd like to see from the RFP, um, come back with some of those questions answered. Like I said, I have talked with a few people, I've talked to a manager. So I kind of, I'm looking forward to tomorrow to see what comes back on that. But, um, and then like I said, hopefully once we can get that information and know where that RFP went, then of course, maybe we can look back to see what we as a council should be maybe investing out there. Maybe we'd have to invest in infrastructure. There's also depending on a plan, you know, we could also go to the FAA for grants and such, but we, we just, we need that plan first on something to go with. And up until, at the moment, we don't necessarily have a plan. So that's what I just wanted to kickstart this with discussion. And like I said, hopefully tomorrow we have something maybe we can go with and then we'll be able to get some direction from there. So that's what I like to think is the community was kind of the aviation community was kind of looking for was all a combination of all those things. So I guess we'll be curious to see how that plays out. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Uh, one more question. We've discussed this before and I'd like to maybe discuss it again in the future. We did remove, um, heliports or helicopters out of industrial property. Back in the day when McCulloch started, all industrial property was allowed to have heliports for this particular reason. Like you're saying, it was a big economic driving force to be able to just fly right into your location and fly right back out instead of going through the airport system. I'm not sure whatever happened with that conversation and it's not about airport hangars right now, but it absolutely is a discussion that we have helicopters needing these as well. And back in the day, you just had a heliport in your backyard of your industrial. And there's still some around in this community. And so I don't know whatever happened with that discussion, but something that we need to maybe bring back up again, because it seemed to just go away.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments before we open the public hearing? All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? If so, you just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record. Uh, you will have, um, a, a time, a box by Ms. Williams. Green means you have time, yellow means you have one minute remaining, red means that, uh, uh, your time is up. But, uh, this is now the time that, uh, we would recommend that you, uh, share whatever your thoughts, concerns, uh, are regarding airport hangars and airport development. Uh, at this point, we can have a two-way conversation, a call to the public, which will be at the end of our meeting. We can just listen intently and not actually, uh, have a conversation or answer, answer questions or, or talk through. So with that being said, uh, please just make your way to the podium. If you are going to address us, yeah, again, you are addressing the council, so just make sure that you address the council, uh, directly. Yeah. Dude, the first one's always the hardest. Once, once the first one, then, then we get into practice. So, yeah.
Hello, uh, City Council, Mayor, good evening. Uh, my name is Lucas Creo. I just kind of wanted to come up here and give a voice to the, uh, smaller pilot, smaller person. I personally, uh, have a store in, um, Phoenix Sun City. I have one here in, uh, Fort Mojave. So I am one of the guys that do use this airport to bounce back and forth. Excuse me. Um, and, you know, from when I'm on the airfield, it's, you know, I'm talking with all the other pilots, GA pilots. And, you know, the hangar is always the issue. Um, as, uh, Mr. Dolan was saying, you know, the mechanics not being out there. So definitely there's a lot of infrastructure that could be in place to make it a lot, um, I mean, it's a, it's a big city. It's a, uh, you know, everybody loves a city. Um, I think there's a lot of things that could happen to, uh, change to make the airport, you know, match, um, the city. Um, as far as my point of view for the, um, proposals, um, you know, they want the taxiways done, the water, the plumbing, you know, everything. So for somebody like myself, it doesn't really seem like a viable option for me to go in and try to say I'm going to, you know, develop the whole entire area. I would have interest to, um, go in and pay for one box hangar and, and go that way. And if there was a way to have other people join me in that venture as well. Um, but, you know, the, the thinking right now is it's just going to be for one large company to go in and do the whole thing. And then rents will be what they'll be. Excuse me, I'm nervous. And, um, you know, the voice for the small guy that, you know, if you guys could take that on, you know, as a grant status or, or in a way to get done that way, um, it would be better for us, the smaller guy. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor? So one thing, City Manager, you said that several weeks ago, dude, almost all of us in this room have gone to every airport meeting and this RFP came out of nowhere, nowhere. We've all been talking about it. We've all been saying, hey, what's it going to take? Can we do hangars? To what Lucas said, it'd be great if we could have small hangars. We all need them. Do we all have a check to write for 500 grand to go put a small hangar in the infrastructure? No, but to say that this has been around for several weeks, that is not. There's a real big name in this town right now that's converting a grocery store to a retail facility for side by sides. And the word on the street is he's the one that got this RFP started because he wants to do something at the airport. So what we want to know, I have a plane, I fly in and out of there. I rent a hangar that's privately owned. I hear the people want to pay 400, 500, 300. I get it. If I could put my plane in an air conditioned hangar, I'd pay a thousand bucks a month. If I could do something with the city and the city says, hey, we need a $50,000 investment from you and we'll be partners on the infrastructure and putting a hangar in and doing this and doing that, I'm totally into it. And I could probably bring 25 of my friends with me to do it too. Again, it's a big thing. People drive around that airport, hey, do you want to sell your hangar? Hey, do you want to rent your hangar? I got my hangar through a friend of a friend of a friend that was somebody that worked at Desert Skies. I was lucky. To say that, and I know you do the inspections, people will tell you, I can get around that inspection. I know a guy that owns a hangar at the airport and it doesn't own an airplane and there's absolutely nothing in it. It's an empty privately owned box hangar. He paid 130,000 bucks for it, said he was going to take his boats out of storage and put them in it, and he has not done it yet. The hangar's been sitting empty for almost a year and a half now. There's a big piece of property that you could almost put two airplanes in, a box hangar, a low wing and a high wing. Then it's, it's empty because it's privately owned. So for us that have airplanes, that's the big thing. What, what's the committee going to be looking for in the selection process? And I know you guys have a grading scale, but they're also human too. And they also want to see what their interests are and, and how they can get their interest met. But for us, if a big company wants to come in, do they have an aviation background? Have they done anything that's good in this town? You know, I, I know everybody's going to talk about Havasu Air Center. I know those guys. They've done stuff at the airport. If they're in on the RFP, they should carry more weight than somebody that's never done anything in our town or has never done anything in aviation. You know, why should a, should a race guy be able to come in and say, well, I'm going to build a big horseshoe hangar for corporate stuff and it's going to bring thousands and thousands of dollars in? Well, that's not necessarily what we want as the people that live in this town. We want small hangars. We need the small hangars. And if somebody does it, what kind of timeline is going to be put on them? You know, these are all things that come up at the, at the airport meetings. Hey, okay, you in the RFP, great, you're going to put the infrastructure in or grants the city and you are going to partner and you're going to put them in. Okay, well, I want to build my big hangar first because I got to get my corporate jet in it and I need to get my businesses running here. Then I'll do the T hangars. 15 years from now, where's our T hangars? I can tell you guys myself personally, I have been on the list for a hangar since 2005. Okay? That's a long time. I talk to Cindy regularly. I go in there regularly. Hey, what's going on? How are you? At all the meetings, we talk about it. So this is definitely something that's very important to all of us. But we need to make sure that you guys have our best interest in it. And not to say that we put an RFP out several weeks ago and everybody knew about it. That's a fallacy. And, and as short as it is, that's surprising too. You waited all of this time, all of these years, all of these conversations of an RFP. And to her point, hey, you guys got five days, who wants in? The guy that went and put all of this in motion is the guy that wants in. And that's the guy that's got the plan together and going to have the most stuff to do because he had time to plan for it. Everybody else is scrambling to put stuff together right now. You, you could have made it 120 days. As slow as you guys have been on this piece of property, you could have made it way longer and really had time to look at it and go, geez. These, you would have had different plans. If your interest is in, is in our interest, then why wouldn't you have given more time for it instead of making it so short? I think that's about all I've got for you guys. Come out to an airport meeting. Thank you for coming when you do come. It's, it's a very well-used and there's a lot of people that use it for business.
Yeah, sir, can you state your name for, uh, Ms. Williams?
Yes, I'm sorry, Andy Holte.
Yeah, and also, uh, you mentioned, uh, the, the small guy or, or T hangars. Is, is T hangars what you're referring to when you refer to small guys? I'm just trying to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, sure, would a box hangar be nice? Because yeah, you can keep your tote in the corner and things like that. But just to have, uh, like I'm in a T hangar right now. If I was in a T hangar again, it's fine.
Okay.
The, to give you some idea of cost, put windows in an airplane, 12,000 bucks. To do the panel in my airplane, like avionics and stuff, you're a hundred grand. It's, it's 30 to 40,000 to paint an airplane to have it nicely done. To leave that sitting out on the tarmac here is almost impossible. You just don't want to do it. So hangars are hugely important. And you can put a heck of a lot of T hangars in a small area because you just put Ts back to back to back. And you end up with, uh, uh, you know, a lot of hangars. And even if the return on investment is slower than the 10-year plan that you guys want to have. Again, you could look at people and say, hey, hey, Andy, do you want a, a T hangar? And you want it with air conditioning and dude, you want some nice lighting in it? Yeah, great. Hey, it's 25 grand and it's 700 a month and it's a 20-year lease. Cool. You guys just got part of your initial investment back right out of the gate to buy into the lease. So there's, there's definitely way more viable options than a super short RFP to try and feed the needs of one guy that has some agenda with his space at the airport.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question? Would that be okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so you, you're, you're subleasing your hangar, correct?
Correct.
Uh, so the gentleman who owns your So the gentleman who owns your hangar, does he own an airplane?
Yes.
He does, just somewhere else?
And owns executive hangers at the airport, too.
Okay.
And multiple airplanes.
And are you on the list for the list to get your own hangers?
I am.
Do you think a lot of people are like that where they're subleasing somebody else's and?
No, because, again, I was very lucky.
Yeah.
Very lucky. Like, stuff at the airport, it's not what you know it to, you know?
Yeah.
So I was lucky enough that I had bought a plane. I got to go in this hangar for 20 days. The person had multiple airplanes, so that airplane that was in that hangar was gone. You know, and not to digress, but even on top of the maintenance, like my plane goes everywhere else for maintenance. I spent 40 grand last year on maintenance and it's all spent in Scottsdale or California. So to the point of having a maintenance shop, that's a lot of money. So then I got another hangar across the way. He wanted to sell his hangar for 130 grand. I don't want to spend $130,000 on something that sits on leased land. It's just not in my wheelhouse. So that hangar sold, I went back to this person, I talked to, I bet you 30 people looking for a hangar scrambling, am I even going to put my airport basically on a tie-down out in front of Desert Skies? And that person said, I think I got one of my planes sold. If I do, I'll sublet mine to you until you get one from the city or something else comes up. I go, okay, cool. That's what I did. That was a year and a half ago.
And thank you for that. I'm just trying to wrap my head around the actual demand. My worry is that, like, I know somebody who is subleasing a hangar and he has a tie-down, I think, a covered spot, but he won't give up the covered spot because he doesn't know if he's going to be evicted from, you know what I mean?
Sure.
So it's the, it's the whole.
Yeah, it's holding on.
It's the whole toilet paper debacle, you know what I mean? Everyone has the scarcity mentality and so I think there's a lot of that out there and I worry that the demand that we think it is, isn't quite what it would be. That's just my only concern. I want to wrap my head around that and really get to an actual number.
To your point, there's two things they could do that's really, really easy at the airport, on privately-owned hangers and on leased hangers. A, you have to own an aircraft.
Yeah.
Registered with an N-number in your name.
Absolutely.
Or a LLC that you are the principal owner in. If not, dude, you got to sell your private hangar or you got to get out of the city hangar.
We do that now?
We do not.
Jess? Or Paul? Sorry?
When it comes to the private hangers, they can sublease to somebody else. City-owned hangers, we do not allow subleasing. And as far as the, what was the other question? I'm still stuck on the sublease part.
About having, do you have to own an airplane?
If, yeah, is it tied.
With a registered N-number in your name.
Tail number in your name.
Specifically with the city hangers, yes. We actually just went through this. Yes, the aircraft has to be registered in your name and specifically the insurance also in your name because we're looking to protect the investment, the city's investment in the hangar. In a private hangar, if somebody decides to sublease to someone else, it's pretty much on them to verify that, you know, that person that's in there that has, if it's your aircraft, I would assume it's registered in your name.
Actually, even though I'm sub-renting from a privately-owned hangar, the city has my insurance on file.
Yes, we do.
I have named the airport on my insurance policy.
That's FA regulations, I'm sure.
Yeah. But to make sure that that's done, so Deer Valley, Scottsdale, two airports that I'm familiar with, you want to put your name on the list? It's 100 bucks. If you sell your airplane and you don't buy another airplane within 30 days and you're not escrow to buy an airplane in 30 days, your hangar's gone.
Yeah.
You go back on the waitlist. You're done. Now, to that, you have to have a large portion of an airplane that doesn't have to be airworthy. You can do that. That's the only way you can have a hangar in those two places and not actually like have a flying airplane or something.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during calls to the public? Excuse me, during this discussion item? Please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, council. My name is Frankie Lyons. I don't know anything about the airport thing, but I understand their point of view. It's always the big boys that come in with the money that you guys choose.
Yeah, would anyone else like to address the city council?
I have one more question.
Oh, no, so you only get one chance up at the podium, but we'll be here afterwards answering questions, yes.
Hi, my name's, oh, addressing the city council mayor. My name is Victor Vance. I'm a hangar owner out at the airport. I own a small experimental airplane and I've got a box hangar. I bought my hangar for about $150,000 about six, seven years ago from the developers that came out of Desert Skies. I'm a retired airline pilot that just wants to hang around in the airport and fly small airplanes. It's a great airport that you guys got out there. We are short on hangers. A lot of people come up and they come by and they say, hey, you guys want to sell your hangar? Do you have space where I can squeeze my airplane in with your airplane? I don't want to get my airplane scratched, so no, I can't, you know, because our babies are airplanes and they are works of art. There are some, they're not so much a work of art and they may be a space saver for somebody that wants to hang on to their hangar. So they'll have a, they'll have a hangar that has an airplane that's either in a work of process of being flyable or not flyable. And that goes to the point where you guys were talking about that as soon as you, your airplane sells, you have to have something else in there, another N-number. Well, that doesn't have to be flyable. Doesn't even have to even look nice. It can be a $5,000 airplane. It can be something that you can just shove in there and say, yep, it's there and I can pull it out and I can push it back in. That's right? As far as the inspection goes?
Right.
All right. But the majority of everybody out there does have an airplane, does have a very nice airplane in their hangers and they really enjoy the hangers themselves. We do need more hangers and a lot of people are looking for either box hangers, T-hangers. What I think where a lot of us are afraid of is the corporate guys that put in these big executive hangers, takes up all the land that we could put, you know, 50 airplanes on and instead they're putting four airplanes, four Gulfstreams or four, you know, big airplanes on. And it really doesn't serve our community as far as the pilots in our group. It serves a very limited few people to do it. I just want to reiterate that we do need a maintenance facility because if somebody's airplane breaks here, I've seen airplanes, helicopters getting traded off the airport to go to get it fixed because we didn't have mechanics here. Or in case of all the flying schools that use our airport because they come in and they do all their training here because it's so crowded in Phoenix, that they'll fly a mechanic in to do the work on the airplane and then they've only got an eight-hour shift. So they'll fly one guy in, he'll work for eight hours, they'll fly him out, fly another guy in for the swing shift and he'll work on the airplane. It's really kind of an amazing situation. So if we get maintenance, if we get small hangers, as well as some of the execs, you know, it's fine, too. But we really need the T-hangers or box hangers to be great. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Hey, councilman, Dan Chain. Couple of questions about the ground lease because I came in a little bit late. I also own a plane, have it in the shared hangar with the FBO. So my dad's an AP, he's retired and we tried for close to a year not to get a hangar for where he could restart having a maintenance shop again. Basically, that was a dead end everywhere we went. He's also a general contractor, so I told him about this RFP, which I didn't get the email for that until about a week and a half ago. So he was trying to put something together, but he wanted me to come down and ask him questions about it as well because I know previously there was, the ground lease was a 30-year ground lease, so that's if he's going to put 500,000 to a million dollars into building a bunch of box hangers, a ground lease that's got a 30-year term on it, makes it kind of a tough swallow to invest that much money into something where he's not really the full owner of it. It's like he puts in all the work and investment and then in the end, what's going to happen at the end of that term? You know, how does it transfer? So I don't know if that was addressed earlier, it might have been something I missed, but that's also a concern that he was definitely talking about and the no time to get anything together, you know, three weeks is extremely short to be able to plan something for, you know, a project of that scope. And also part of what you're saying with the guy in town, probably referring to Robbie Gordon, I would probably avoid anything that he does if you look into his history. I don't think I'd use him as a business partner, just to have history there. So that's all I had.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council during call? Mr. Knutson?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I can. So a lot of conversations in terms of like ground leases. So it's important to understand that the city cannot sell any portion of the airport, the land, that in perpetuity, that belongs to the airport. So anything that takes place in terms of development at the airport is through a ground lease. And then different conversations with the development of hangers or FBOs or whatever that looks like, then there's a negotiation with the city to look at how long is that lease. When the airport used to be on the island, it was moved over to the existing location. There was a handful of T-hangers that were essentially promised through contracts to, with those owners in perpetuity, that's their, that's their hangers. But that's obviously the, they sit on airport property. So on a month-to-month, but in, I think it's, I don't think there's an end date or a termination. Yeah. So I just want to kind of put that out there in terms of what the, the city cannot sell a portion of the airport and we deal with ground leases with space, whether it's an FBO or individual hangar space.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. And to your point, Mr. Knutson, when I mentioned earlier that over 90% of the airport's funded by grants, it's because we have to follow all of these regulations from the FA and others. Yes. Good evening, welcome.
Good morning or good evening. This is, my name is Dante Marinelli. I own Havasu Air Center along with my brother and, you know, obviously, a lot of this conversation really does revolve around hangar space and city needs and all these things. And we're here because, you know, it's important to shape this conversation over a really longer period of time than just what we're going to do here and what we're going to do for the next few years, you know? And so from our perspective, we started our business 16 years ago out there. We had no idea what was going to take place today to have the level of traffic or jets or military traffic or any of these things. You can't forecast that. And so this is a big piece of land. You know, it's a big piece of land. I can tell you that we are going to be putting in a RFP tomorrow for some space out there. And, you know, our concern is like many others that you hear here, there is absolutely a need for all levels of services and hangers, you know, and we don't disagree. I mean, we've been out there fighting the good fight for 16 years and, you know, I hear frustration in the room about maintenance. Well, I do, I own the only maintenance company out there right now. And we developed that based on, if you remember, two different maintenance companies. And when we came in, you know, we would have been the devil if we would have put that other little maintenance company out of business because they did piston maintenance. And so we worked over the last 16 years hand-in-hand with other maintenance company and we serviced the turbine engines and the larger aircraft and we didn't actually push any of our business model to a smaller aircraft. Now, unfortunately, you know, that was great until he decided to sell and not there anymore and we do have a void right now. We also have a void because as much as we want to try and hire, you know, A&amp;P mechanics right now just to service smaller aircraft, I mean, you know, let's be honest, I mean, you know, the younger generation now works on Game Boys, they don't work on airplanes. And you just can't snap your fingers and say, hey, I want a, I want a GA mechanic out there and I want to build a piston maintenance shop, you know, just like this. But what I can say is that our proposal is going to make sure that we have space for the person that wants to come in and start servicing that because we can't be everything to everyone. We don't want to be. We can't be. But we can start providing these spaces so that way other businesses can come in and start actually providing the necessary services. And it is absolutely something that we do talk about, you know, I mean, let's be honest, the city looked at this and said it's a bad investment. So what, so what the heck is Havasu Air going to do to come in and say, well, if you guys can't make a go of it in 10 years and you own the land, so now I'm going to pay you and guess what? And I'm still going to try and make a go of it in less than 10 years and a 30-year investment and all these things. And we've done that. We've done that with a partnership with the city over the last, over the last 16 years and God willing, many more. And it's part of being an airport and part of being a big community and part of knowing where your place is in that, in that big pond. And the fact is, is that what we're looking for and what we're proposing is definitely something that fits the master plan. What our most concern is, is that we have, we just don't want to shotgun a plan that all of a sudden pigeonholes this airport because this is, honestly, it is the last big piece of developable land. And if we screw it up, God help us, because we don't have any more. You can't build, you can't build towards the mountains, you can't build towards the other way, there's nowhere the place to go. And so what we're proposing is something that's, we're going to take a small bite of the apple and then we're going to say, please, let us prove a concept and then keep going with it. And give us a space to start really actually going and start running with this. And hopefully, you know, in another 16 years, we're sitting here going, hey, we did a great job and we're going to keep going with that plan. And I would caution the council to say, look, we really need to evaluate long-term what we want and how we're going to place it to make sure that it fits the overall arching. We, you know, I mean, I know we don't have airlines now, but the city is growing. I mean, everything's growing. We will have airlines at some point. I really, truly believe it. And we need to make sure that we plan places for this, for the hangers, for all these things. And it's a big piece of land. It's a really, really raw undevelopable piece of land because why? Well, it's the last piece. And why didn't we develop it first? Well, because it's the worst, you know, and that's just what it is. I mean, let's be honest, you put out the worst piece of land last and that's okay, but, you know, we're going to get through it. We, as I said, I know there's a lot of frustration in the room because there's a lot of pent-up demand. We've had the last five years where costs have skyrocketed, it's impossible to do this, blah, blah, blah. But I really think that what the focus should be is GA and GA supported by not just small, but all types of GA that will, that will basically mix and need. You know, there's not just a little bit for a little bit, there's not a little bit for the big guy, there's enough for everyone and it's a big parcel. It's a big piece of land. As long as it's developed right, that's really our biggest concern.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yep, absolutely.
Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Good evening, council. I'm getting beat before I even say anything. My goodness. My name's Dante Marinelli and I'm the senior Marinelli. But I just wanted to let you know that I think everybody's trying to do a job out at the airport. We've been involved for so many years and gone through so many RFPs and so many disappointments out there that, you know, we've tried to do things and they've said no. And there's so much competition that's been going on between the different FBOs. We finally, yes, we did make an agreement with Desert Skies to continue some of the services down in that area. But most importantly, I would ask you to take a look at the history because understand that there were three FBOs. FBOs. We were denied our first RFP because we were told that we had no business experience. And the council at this, not this council, but 16 years ago, said, I'm sorry, but we're going to give it to one of the other people that have an RFP, that already have the experience, which is fine. We understand. Then we had a small area behind Desert Skies that we were trying to get. We were told, no, you can't have that. But if you want to go up to the north end that's totally undeveloped, we'll work a deal with you out there. So $10 million later, we're out at a facility that's up on top of a hill that's distanced from everything. I mean, we're not close to the main ramp. We're not close to anywhere. Did we develop the business? Yes. I'm going to tell you, the boys have worked super, super hard to bring in the type of business that we have out there. It just doesn't happen. There's a lot of alternatives for people to go elsewhere. And the businesses and things that have come into Havasu come because of the air center. They enjoy going there. It's professional. We can provide the services. I understand about maintenance-ing aircraft. I mean, we would love to have a piston mechanic up there that would work for us. It's difficult to find these people. We, they're just virtually impossible to find. So I think with the boys and their understanding that maybe we can do like a hairdresser does where they buy a building and then they rent a space to these individuals to come in and supply some of those services. We can't, but maybe they can as individuals. Again, being the operator that we are out there, there's such a responsibility because of the size of the property, the types of insurances that we have to carry because we are dealing with the big aircrafts that are very expensive. And we have to watch everything as far as damaging and doing the things that a big company has to worry about. So the great thing about Havasu Air is that everything we promised, we've done. We were told in our RFP that we had to build hangers. We built hangers. We were told that we had to provide gas services. We provide gas services. We were told we had to do maintenance. We do maintenance. We were told that it'd be nice to have a rental car company up there. Do we have a rental car company? Yes. Why? Because all of our doctors and things that came in during COVID couldn't find cars to get to their offices. So what did we do? We went out and bought seven rental cars for our doctors and those people that come in. We don't rent it to the public. We rent it specifically to these doctors and the people that need to get around town. So we tried to provide a service for them. We had a time where there was a, a organ donor that came in. We couldn't get them from the airport to the hospital because we had no services. So that's when we realized we had to do. So we stepped out of the plate there. Since then, you find some of the other FBOs have given up. You let D2 give up, sell their, sell all of their facilities, their hangers, everything else, their gas, they leased over to Desert Skies. They made an agreement between the two there. So all these people that come in are now out. And 16 years later, we're still here and we still are providing what we wanted and we told you we would provide. So I would hope that you trust us in the new RFP and some of the agreements or some of the ideas that we have in furthering the airport, that if Havasu Air says we're going to do it, we will do it. And along with the city, we'll make sure that it's done properly and it benefits all of us. So thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Um, could I please know who's on the selection committee?
Yeah, could you pull the microphone down just a little bit and state your name, please? Yeah. What's your name?
Ashley Holte.
Ashley? And the question is, who's on the selection committee?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Is that Mr. Mr. Blazer or Mr. Knutson?
I'm a deferred.
Yeah. Mr. Knutson, who's on the selection committee?
Was that identified in the RFP itself?
At this time, we have six members that have been identified. And they consist of the public works director, the city manager, finance director, our city attorney, our development services director.
Yeah, I couldn't, I missed the last one too. I'm sorry.
Our development services director.
Okay.
And I didn't know if you guys knew, but there's 145 planes that land per day on average. So that's all I have.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Counsel and everyone, I'm Reese Mead. I've been a community member for about 40 years here.
Yeah, Dr. Mead, now if you could just take the microphone up a little bit. Sorry. Thank you.
And talking about the need a little bit, when I first came here and built an airplane and I had this brand new airplane that I'd built and I put it out on the runway because I couldn't get any hangers anywhere. And this is back in 84 or 85. And, you know, we were trying to get them and still didn't have enough. We'd been out at the old airport before. We didn't buy the hangers in because we didn't believe the city would really move them over there like they did. So we didn't buy any at that time. My airplane sat out there and rotted for a year. And finally, some other pilot in the community, how pilots can be, said, I'm sick of seeing your airplane rotting out in the sun. And I was in a hangar with somebody who had a box hangar that had room for, like he said, a high wing, low wing plane and sat there, you know, and, and all that time, I tried to get a hangar all that time. But I had this, you know, it hadn't been for someone just saying, I'm sick of seeing your airplane die out there. You know, let me come in, put your hangar, come in with me, put me in here so I can do that. So I think the need isn't something that's new at all out there. I mean, we've been having that problem as long as I can remember, you know, and that's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item?
Council mayor, I didn't expect to speak today. I only speak in front of large crowds when I'm mad at them or something. So.
Could I mention your name, sir?
Oh, Jim Holloman. I live here in town.
Thank you.
And I, I own a, an aviation company, management company and aviation company in California over in Ontario. And I, I fly, I fly a $20 million jet currently. I teach in the jet. I teach in small aircraft and I, and I do inspections on large aircraft. And I've been waiting for the day where I can move it out here because I'm tired of driving back and forth. I've owned several aircraft and I've sold them because I got mad at it because it kept breaking. But if I can get a hangar out here, I'll buy another one. Recently, I tried to get another one, but I found out that there's no hangers anymore because I kind of fell off the list. If there was a hangar now, I'd go buy it tomorrow. There's one I have in mind. But I, I drive the drive, sick of that drive. And my, the company that owns one of the, the large jets that I do fly keeps asking me, hey, you got to move it out to, out there. Not as a big corporation company, don't, you know, bring several corporate jets, but something that'll fit one or two, maybe something that I could work on in the meantime, you know. There's an avionics company that wants to join me in this and, and they're with some of the popular avionics installation companies. And they said, hey, you get something out there. I want to expand. I want to go out there, install avionics there and you can supervise that. So I got a lot of stuff to bring to the, to the table out here, but there's no room, you know. So I'm just saying that I could, you know, I, I'd like to, I'm an instructor also, so I could teach on the side. I'd just like to kind of expand what I'm doing out there because I've, I've shrunk the size of my company on purpose in California because the drive, I'm sick of it. I'm sick of sleeping in my hangar and, and, you know, yeah, sleeping in my hangar in, in the office. But they let you. But I carry all the insurances that are required and all the millions of dollars of insurance. And so I thought, you know, it'd be nice to kind of start a backup appear because I know all of the large aircraft or airports that I fly into in SoCal, they, they, they would bring their airplanes here, people that I know that own them, sitting out in Orange County on the ramp, those guys especially. And some guys that want to join me out here have airplanes, the business owners that are out there, the avionics company, three of them own airplanes. They would fly back and forth to work here or live here. Just, that's a lot of movement happening. And I, this is the first I've heard of this yesterday. I thought, oh, hey, let's go to the meeting and talk about it. But, well, I, I got something to say about it. So, you know, I know there's a lot to go, you know, into it, but that's, that's, that's kind of what I have about it.
Yeah, no, thank you for sharing. I, I might have missed. Do you have a business here at the airport?
I don't have it here. It's, it's.
It's in California.
I would bring it here.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's room to grow for me for that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for additional discussion. So this item here is a discussion item. It is a, a little odd that the item came forward by Vice Mayor, Councilmember Dolan. And, and then at the same time, this RFP has come. So they, they've kind of now are taking parallel paths. But this really was about hangar development. So from my perspective, I do think that as a council, I would like us to stay focused on addressing the hangar issue. So whether that's solved through this RFP process, if that's then a future discussion we have to have with, with an investment from, from the general fund and understanding what that looks like. I do think that there's enough need from an economic development standpoint as well as general aviation users out there that we need to, to do something. There hasn't been really any hangar development in this area. And it's been something that has been requested all the time I've served on council. So I do think that we need to have a, a, an eye on it and a focus. Hopefully, we can do it through an RFP process where we don't have to use general fund dollars or those types of things. We can partner with, with grants and some of the, the like. But like to get feedback from other council members if, if that's a focus that we want to have as a council. And then Mr. Knutson and his team can work towards meeting that goal. Any thoughts from members of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Maybe the city manager can give us an update on how the RFP process works from here on out, what criteria they're looking for. Do we as council give direction on what we're looking for, big picture, prior to that RFP meeting? Or, you know, or do we just take what we were looking at today? You know, the tea hangers, kind of a mix of everything? What happens next and how does that process play out?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Dolan, certainly. So an RP, RP issued by the city, we do several, several, maybe probably feels like about 100 a year, whether it's RP or RFQ that, that goes out. So, and that part of that process, the city identifies exactly what we want to see or what the situation is with the background. What, what are we trying to accomplish with this, this process? We put it out for a period of time and then, and then we get to proposals that come back. And sometimes proposals are pretty straightforward. We want an asphalt company to pave a road or replace water or sewer mains or, or otherwise. And a lot of times we have certain RFPs that are out there that are a little bit more creative in terms of the responses that are coming back to, to the city. And this, this obviously includes, includes this, this effort. By the way, we have an RFQ that's, that's on the street as well too, for taking a look at the, the concept of a second bridge, like the demographics of the island and, and the future of the island and, and is a second, second bridge warranted as, as part of that process. So as an example, right, that, that's out there. Proposals come in. We have a selection committee that, that includes the, the experts at the, at the staff level. And then we do, we'll, we'll do, we'll score the proposals. We'll probably likely bring in each of the proposers. If there's more than one, hopefully that's the case. Hopefully there's eight that, that we can, that we can take a look at, more the merrier. And then at that point, then we might probably do interviews and see what that, that looks like. And then there's a, a scoring that takes place from that perspective as, as well too. All of those, those thoughts that take place, selection committee will identify the, the one that's the best for the users at the airport. In the end, that is the, that is our, our gauge, right, our, our measurement, a measuring stick at what this looks like. What is going to benefit the users at the airport? What benefits the airport? And, and that's vitally important. And then we'll negotiate a contract. What does that look like for timing, for cost, for services? Does it impact the little guys and the, and the, the big private jets, those types of things, right? And then that contract will then come to council and council make a determination on the, on entering into a contract. Some back and forth will obviously occur at the, the council level in terms of what makes the most sense out there. In the meantime, I've had conversations with each and every one of you on, for several years, on, on hangar development and what that looks like at the airport, what type of resources does it take to get to that, to that level and so forth. A lot of conversations take, take place at the Airport Advisory Board over, over the last several years, our airport talks, constant communication with my office and, and others within the city for, from airport manager and so forth. And listening and telling in terms of what that looks like tonight. And all of that gets kind of packaged into a proposal that we bring, again, bring to council, council decides. Let's go in that direction or let's do something a little bit different. Very, very long-winded answer, but there's, there's a lot that goes into it, a lot of thought, obviously.
Yeah, thank you.
Simply yes or no would have been fine.
Councilmember Campbell?
I, I know it's too late because the RFP is already out there and I haven't been in the discussions as long as many of the people on the council have. But one comment that they made was this 30-year lease and how the numbers just don't pencil out. And I can understand right now by looking just a business mind, the little bit of information I have in front of me, that that would be concerning for me, especially knowing that that piece of land is, it's going to be difficult to develop. I, I own property out in that area too. So I'm very aware how difficult that is to develop. Is there, is there a possibility, obviously it's too late now, why didn't we ever look at a 50-year lease? That's pretty much my question. Have we ever looked at a 50-year lease? And yeah, I just haven't been in that conversation.
I'm sorry. Are you talking about FBO leases or individual hangar leases? When you're talking 50 years. So like under the state statute, if we're going to do a lease, like an FBO lease, it was now, it's probably been several years now. I've been here for a while. It feels like it was just a couple of years ago, but it was increased to allow them to, for 50 years and they can renew for another 50. It used to be 30 or 40 years that they could renew now. So 50 years now, but that would be for like an FBO type of lease. And so all of like our hangar leases are all basically month to month.
Okay.
Same thing happens with state leases with parks. You know, every, I mean, it's 30 years is pretty standard. But in my negotiations and things that I've seen, those, as long as you're a good actor, those, that 30-year gets renewed kind of deal. So.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
The only question, statement I have on that is I have lifetime leases on state property. Because we're in the mine business. So again, there are longer leases than just that. So the question was, like she stated, there is been, they do 50-year leases. They do 100-year leases on certain entities. I just didn't know about this particular entity. So that was my statement to that.
Yeah. So they, at, at the time, it was 30 or 40 years, as I understand, Ms. Gary. And then state statute changed to now allow for FBOs. So this is fixed-based operators specifically to 50 years, but that would be for new agreements. So if we were to entertain an FBO contract, if that's what one of the responders to the RFP does, and that's what the selection committee thinks is good and the council agrees, then the negotiation could be 50 years now by state statute. Is, is that my understanding, Ms. Gary?
Yes. The statute isn't specific to FBOs, but it is to like leases for aviation purposes on the airport. Those types of leases, yes. And with an RFP that go for it.
The RFP is already out.
No, yeah, that's, that'll all be negotiated after the selection committee makes the recommendation to council. They'll negotiate what makes sense for them from a financial perspective, but it sounds like 50 years would be the maximum based on state statute.
Correct. 50 years would be the max and then they would have an opportunity to renew for additional 50 years.
So the applicants on this RFP were aware that they could possibly, if through negotiations, get up to 50 years?
Mayor and Councilmember Campbell, I think that, you know, the process is, is, Councilmember Dolan, you know, what, what does that look like for an RFP and the proposals come, come back in, right? So the proposals come, come back in, that we take a, a close look at them and what that means in terms of, for the benefit of the users and the, and the airport. Scoring occurs both by the proposal level and then, and then some follow-up that, that may, may occur. And then we enter into contract negotiations with the, the, the firm or the individual that's best suited to do business with the, with like Havasu City at our airport. And then all of that, that comes, comes into play. Are we talking about what they, that space is going to look like in terms of when will development occur? Is that going to take place in the next six months or six years? What, what's your plan from a proposer's perspective? How many hangers are you going to have? What's the type of hangar that you're looking at, at developing? Are you going to make a space available for, we hear a lot from the airport users, not just tonight, but, but overall, they want to build their own hangar. So just give me a pad where I can build, build a hangar and, and then, and I'm, and I'm done here. So all, there's so many different users, so many different sizes when it comes to aircraft, from, from hobby to professional to, to jet. And they all have different needs, right? And then you got the commercial aspect of all these things. So we're, we're hopeful, you know, we're getting word that we got at least one proposal coming in from Havasu Air Center. That, that, that's, that's exciting. Let's see what that, that looks like. And, and then we'll enter into negotiations if they're the, the one that's selected to best do business with the city or if it's somebody else, then that's the case as well too.
Mayor, if I could clarify just one thing. Throughout this process, there was a specific question from a proposer, potential proposer related to the ground lease. The question was, what's the longest ground lease the city will enter into? Because all of our existing ground leases are 30 years, at least to my knowledge, the, the longest one we have currently is 30 years. Our response was 30 years. So that is out in the public right now. And I, to your point, I think, I don't know that that can be changed at this point without extending the due date of the RFP and creating another addendum.
Is, is there an amendment out there?
Mayor and council, yeah. Greg's right in terms of the, the question. So we said, we set up RFP and then if somebody's got a question about that RFP, we collect those questions and then we answer those questions. We publish them directly on our website. The question came up is, what's the, what's the term that they're looking at is, is 30 years, right? In terms of the, our, our response. There's also the ability for, what does that look like at the end of 30 years? So there's much more nuance involved than just saying it's 30 years and we're, it's, it's over and done with. So there's some opportunity for the, for the, for the council to make a determination on what's the best for, use for the airport.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, yeah, absolutely. This whole discussion was just a general overview of hangers at the airport. We've gotten into all kinds of other things as well. I think that without a doubt, we have established, yes, there's a need for additional hangers at the airport. We all agree with that. We need to make sure that this stays on the front burner, that we're working on this. We need to make sure that this stays on the front burner, that we're working on this. We have lots of needs and wants within the city. We have X amount of dollars that we can spend, whether it's roads or ball fields or hangers at the airport. There's a lot of different balls that we're juggling all the time to make sure that the return on investment works best for all of the people in the city of Lake Havasu. Part of that is the economic driver of the airport. So we now know that this, and we have known for a while. It just has taken us a while to get to this. Thank you, Councilmember Dolan, for bringing this forward so that we can discuss this. Yes, we know that there's an issue. We know that you need more hangers. Now we have to come together, all of us work together so that we can come up with a plan and supply the hangers that are needed. So as you said, yes, we need to keep this on the forefront and work on this as we move forward.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Coke?
Mayor, I just say, kind of echo what Councilmember Lane said. I know for all my years on council, I, oddly enough, I looked in the audience tonight and one of the people who contacts me the most, at least twice a year, is unfortunately not here. So I do get a number of people that regularly contact me regarding this issue and have for a, a long time since I've been on council. So happy to hear the people coming here to tell us what's on your mind and, and the needs and concerns. And definitely something we need to consider because we haven't really had this in-depth conversation in all my years on council.
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane?
Yeah, I just want to say one more thing because as you brought up, people got up and spoke. Ashley, you did an awesome job. So thank you for getting up and doing that.
All right, with that, then we'll go ahead and close this discussion out today. Again, thank you very much, Councilmember Dolan, for bringing this forward. Thank you, Mr. Blazer and Shannon for, for presenting this evening. And we'll continue to keep our eye on the ball and, and move this, this issue forward, so. All right, the next item on our agenda is a call to the public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council within items with, with items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments are limited to three minutes. Again, there is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining and red means that your three minutes is up. We ask that your comments are in the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City and you address the council directly. You don't have to sign up for a call to the public, but we did have one person do that. Also during a call to the public, as I mentioned earlier, we cannot have a two-way conversation. We can just listen intently to whatever comments you may have, but we can't actually respond to any of the questions. So we'll start with the first person that signed up, Mr. Morgan Brayden.
Yes, Morgan Brayden, you all know me. What I want to address is the park down on McCullough on Main Street, Springburg Park again. I have talked to you once before about this. I did send out an email to all six councillors and the mayor. And I think something happened because I only had two people respond. That's Mayor, thank you for your response, I agree with what you said, and Michelle Lynn. They're the only two that responded to my emails, so I guess nobody else got that email. So that's why I decided to come up and say something tonight. We got to be careful of what we're doing with that park. Lot of, in, lot of people use that park for different things. Example being two weeks ago when they had, one week ago, when they had the Desert Storm. If you walked down there and saw that park, there was a ton of things on that park. If we go with the current design that is scheduled right now, that wouldn't happen. There wouldn't be room. I personally do two events at that park myself for my little Brayden's Havasu gift things. And Frank from Canyon City, Canyon City Events, I think that's what he calls it. I talked to him about it. He says, if you go with that park the way you've got it designed right now, he ain't coming back because he can't use that park with the amount of grass you're taking out and all of the trees and the rest of the stuff that's in that proposal. So while I agree, we do need to get a stage in there, a stage would be nice. But I think for the amount of money we're spending, number one, we could put in the bridge over from the parking area because that would help tremendously. We could put in a small stage and we can put in some bathrooms, kind of like that are down at the swap meet, rather than a converted conic shed. I think that looks ridiculous. I think we could do all that for a lot less money than what we're spending now. And I have talked to other large business owners in town that use that park and they say they are not happy with the current design. I think we need to go through that design again. Give more grass space, put a little stage on the north side or on the east side, put a couple bathrooms in there, a couple lights. That's really all you need to do to that park to make that usable the way it is right now and for a lot of events that happen and use that park. Again, I just highly encourage you to consider re-looking at that design. I mean, we've gone several years since we've been issued the initial million dollars to use for that park. What's bad about giving another couple of months to redesign it so it's better usable for everybody that uses it now? And when we have the big park up and down Main Street, Winterfest? If you do it the way it is now, Dean Mesmer with the Boat Brokers, he won't be able to put his boats in there and his classic cars. He can't do it, there's just not enough room. And again, I think you're going to run a lot of current users away with the current design. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public?
My legs are hurting. Oh, hi, Bonnie Toy. I listened to the planning and zoning committee meeting last week and it was addressing the city's multi-residential parking issues. And as I listened to the meeting, I noticed that the only issue that they were concerned with were residential issues. And I did not quite understand why more issues weren't brought up. Also, I'm really sorry to tell Mr. Morris, but there are a lot of people who do complain about parking in Lake Havasu and parking lots. And I have no idea why he thought no one ever complains because I hear complaining all the time. Mostly when I am, am trying to pull into a parking spot, I complain at the parking spot. But it isn't just residential places. I don't know if you realize it, but residential parking isn't the only issue in Lake Havasu. Our stores are overcrowded, we have a lot of guests. As a result, there are a lot of parking lots that cause city traffic to even be hindered in certain areas. Specifically, the Starbucks on Swanson Avenue and Lake Havasu Avenue. And I don't know who's in charge of designing the whole store facility issues in cases like that. And I believe when people probably were complaining about the new things going up on Park Avenue, the whole restaurant, drive-through restaurant that's supposedly going to be there underneath all of those apartments, that who goes stands in the area and then looks at the traffic and the flow of the traffic? Because if you go to Starbucks, the flow of the traffic and is, the way the building is set up, it has, makes no logical sense whatsoever in order to, for the parking lot to flow. So you have traffic backed up on Lake Havasu Avenue, you have traffic backed up on Swanson in all different directions. And even if you do put a, one of those horrifying medians that are supposed to go all the way down Lake Havasu Avenue one day in the future, that will just cause even more problems because there's still no cohesive flow to that. So many complexes are like that throughout Lake Havasu, not just that one in particular.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Frankie Lyons. At a previous meeting, I gave a friendly reminder to Cameron Moses there, there are issues with the Improvement District, number two, commonly referred to as a swap meet area. We were told it was too late to, for any changes last year and you agreed to look into this and be prepared, the budget talks this year. When you called and told me I was holding your feet to the fire, I again stated that this amounted to no more than a question that I needed answered. I gave you opportunity to get this straightened out. The only action you took was to ask someone if they still wanted to pay the assessment for the district. To be clear, you are in that district and benefit from whatever arrangements that are made. I'm here once again because it details further scrutiny. According to the Finance Director, the city has been paying for all expenses for this area, including water, sewer, electricity, landscaping, parking lot maintenance, and bathrooms. The tax levy that is collected amounts to about $16,000 a year. There's no evidence of any revenue such as rent for the use of the parking lot for the swap meet. Is that city or does that belong to that group, London Bridge? That London, London Bridge area? I've been charged, they've been charging others for use of the parking lot for electricity that is provided by the city. And then if anyone wants to use this area, the London Bridge Plaza, of course, it's going to stick, charges $400 a day. It's no wonder, no wonder they and you want to keep everything the same. This is something the council and our city manager should be on top of. It deserves more attention than you have given it. Money for things like ball fields and swimming for the kids is available if you look for it. Encourage, I'm encouraging everybody here to come to the budget meetings on the 11th of May. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Item nine is our current events. Are there any current council committee reports? Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, thank you. We, you know, we've, we've had quite a few groups tour the pneumatic facility. But we just did our big open house on the 21st to the public and it was a, it was a great event. We're kind of excited that we're about 40% capacity right now. Right in line with the pro forma that we've developed for that. We're hoping to be about 63% by the end of the year. And just things are plugging along really, really nicely with that project. They've also been working on a, helped along with, you know, Go Lake Havasu. They're bringing a pro watercross jet ski race, yet another one kind of sponsored by Liquid Molly Oil Company. It'll be out near the Riviera Marina. And I think that's right around end of September or so. And that's going to be a syndicated televised event, so lots of good things happening.
Excellent, thank you for the update.
Yeah.
Are there any other council committee reports? All right, our future meetings, our next meeting is on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 at 5:30 PM. And then on Thursday, May 11th, 2023 at 9 AM, we'll have a budget work session. And then on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023 at 5:30, we'll have a regular meeting. All of those will be here in the council chambers. Item 11, future discussion items. Are there any future discussion items for members of the council? All right, item 12, motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here, be kind, we'll see you next time.